The August 4th, 2015 Statesboro City Council Meeting. I'd like to ask Councilwoman Travis Chance to lead us in our invocation and plakable allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Ms. Allen Alter would be to lead us in the prayer order.
Yes, and we follow the thank you for this opportunity. Thank you that you show us kindness and mercy over our nation. And we never be ashamed to look to you for guidance, Lord. We as a city, county, state, and nation, never be ashamed to call upon your guidance for us each day, Lord. And thank you for the men and women that serve our community, Lord. Thank you that you protect us. This is the guidance of your grace, Lord. We commit this morning to you, Jesus.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got a long agenda today, so we're gonna try to move through it as judiciously and quickly as we can. So Ms. Sue, do we have any public comments to be made on our Agenda Item 3?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I'll move to Agenda Item 4, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. I will ask council to review A, B, and C, and then ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're gonna move to Agenda Item 5. I'm gonna ask for both Mandy Coby with Planning Development and Alvin Lee Park to jump in and introduce Agenda Item 5 to us. It has actually, the first part of that Agenda item does not require any action. That's more of an explanation. And then we'll move to Items 5A and 5B as it requires action. Would you like to go ahead, Mandy?
Sure, yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Planning Development Department is in receipt of an application for a non-contiguous annexation for 10 acres of property located along Railroad DeBrae at the intersection of that road with Torrey-Rushing Road and Burke-After Road. This is within the jurisdiction formally or currently mounted as a capital college for Pepper's district and was filed pursuant to the 100 percent method by the landowner of South Bridge Community Church. The staff has begun processing this annexation and to meet our statutory deadlines modification. We have submitted that on your council legitimate for acceptance and first reading today and also have the notification processes to Bullock County. Being this is a non-contiguous annexation, Bullock County Commissioners will be required to agree or at least not object, depending on your reading of statute, to the annexation of these 10 acres. The applicant has also filed with this application request for extension of water and sewer services to this particular property. For the property to develop as a church, which is requested intended use as we've been understanding, state fire codes, life safety codes, will require that the building be sprinkled given its occupancy, climate, and classification. That takes some sort of qualifications, and you all know, with water pressures and things of that nature. We and the staff and development team and department heads are processing both of these requests for annexation, for zoning that accompanies our annexation, as well as the extensions of the utilities to this particular site. We have met with the applicant in a Right Star meeting and are going through those processes and analysis now. This application will be presented for land use and ceding a planning commission, assuming that you accept this application, which would begin formally the process of the staff being able to do what we need to do in accordance with statute for annexation to move it forward. We will continue to put our recommendations together for you all and bring those back to you at a later date for both zoning, non-contiguous annexation, as well as utility requests.
So just so you all know, Mandy and I had a conversation this morning to kind of clear up this process. It's a little bit different from what we've done in the past because this is a non-contiguous zoning application. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alvin, okay? The first motion, 5A, is to say, yes, we've received the application, not approved or anything, we've just received it, and we're officially notifying the county that we've received it. And so the county will have a part in this process.
Yes, and they've already begun to have a part in this process, so they absolutely will, since they enjoy planning and the part of the recommendation that comes to you all and sees that.
Well, there's another part to that, too, which is they have to vote to allow that annexation to occur. And so when we look at...
Why is that?
Because it's a non-contiguous.
Because it's non-contiguous, that's the only reason they have to vote.
I won't stop because I just gave you my limited knowledge of this in one sentence. So, without further ado, I'm gonna ask Alvin to give us a little explanation on the county's legal side of things, what they need to do, and how that factors into our voting timetable process, et cetera.
My understanding is that the non-contiguous annexation is going to occur. If the non-contiguous annexation is going to occur in the county, the board of commissioners will have to take some affirmative action to vote to approve the annexation. Unlike with the contiguous annexation, they can, they can file certain objections in a certain manner or not object and sort of default. I don't think they could really default here. I think that for this to go forward, they will have to vote to allow it. That's my understanding of how a non-contiguous annexation works at this time.
Okay, so we're gonna notify that we got the application through official notification, even though Mandy's already said that unofficially she's let them know. Through an official notification of 5A that we've actually received the application. That's all that is. And then 5B will be a public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve first reading, which I don't even know if we need a motion to approve a first reading, but we just have a first reading. Is that correct?
Probably, as Mandy and I were discussing this coming up the stairs, I think the first reading is more of a internal practice and procedure, and it doesn't, it really doesn't do any more than accepting the application.
So just to be clear, as we go forward, do we need a motion to approve a first reading, or do we just have a public hearing and a first reading?
I think you just have a public hearing and a first reading.
That's what I thought, so we don't need to take any action.
You don't need to take any action.
And then at this point, we would wait to hear back from the county to say they would approve that. And at that point, we could actually vote on it. We would take action because there would be something to take action on. The county has said, we will approve of this annexation. We, you know, we approve of the request. And then at that point, we would come back and have a second reading and a vote on whether or not to approve it as a city council, is that correct?
That's the way I understand it.
Okay, alright, so just wanted to clear that up because it was a little unclear to make, so my conversation this morning, I think that's what I understood. Okay?
Mayor, another reason that we've gone into this detail on something like this, being that it's not contiguous, it throws in some elements that are a little bit different, and that's one reason we've had a Right Star meeting with the county present, so that we could go through and discuss anything that the county had already talked about within, and I think they have put some conditions that they not wanted to annex. And then from us, we're really starting to look at it in a comprehensive manner, which being non-contiguous, it does more than just utility extensions. You've got fire service, you've got police, you've got garbage pickup, you've got other things, so we really will bring a lot of that to the next meeting, but I would like council and mayor to think about those things as well. I'm not saying that in a negative sense, it's just we're looking at it in a more comprehensive manner.
Okay. So I would ask at this point, does council have any questions about the process? Should they have any questions for Mandy before we ask for a resolution to accept the application and notify the county officially? Okay.
I have about a couple. How close is the closest city parcel to this property? How far, how far out would it be as an island, I don't know itself?
It's, it's, that's a good question, council. It's about two parcels, but those are very large parcels, well over 100 acres. But if you're looking at utility and just kind of roadway, it's about, probably about a mile at the Drake Line.
Maybe exactly about 3,000, depending.
Two thirds of a mile.
Two thirds of a mile.
So that is...
Since we don't have map of those properties, I don't know if they've developed.
They're undeveloped.
They're undeveloped, they're owned by, um, HGB.
How much approximately would it cost us to drop water to two thirds of a mile?
I did not do a cost estimate, the sewer, the water, I came up 285,000. HGB came up 280,000, so it's pretty realistic, I think, but that's probably a high. Jared Maugh, his representative client, would act on the year to ease the work effort on the cost level. The sewer, the, I believe, mayor and council, the previous council meeting made a commitment to the sewer developers on the, that are contiguous, to the city, at least design that sewer and have made a commitment to extend that sewer if we had funding available. Just that first leg of sewer, getting it considered, and that's punching it under the walkway, it's worth about 758,000. To get from there to this side, probably talking to me and I have to, it's all for him.
I was gonna say that, that seems like that's gonna be a little bit more than we're gonna be able to do, plus, I mean, we've already, and I'm not saying we're not obviously in favor, but we've already had a situation where a local church has asked us for consideration, and we're unable to give them tremendous amount of help, so, I mean, that's just something I think we need to keep in back of our minds.
We'll be out for a minute. And you'll be running over Mr. Mayor's property. He has expressed a lot of interest in annexing into the city.
So what that is...
Up until this point, up until this point, I can't speak for him, obviously.
So I just, I guess I wanna make sure all that has been effectively communicated with the church and with the board, and just make sure that they understand that they're doing this, assuming we're just gonna drop Trump lines and go. That may not be the case.
Yes, sir. That was discussed with them at last week's Right Star meeting. And what that does, council, is that raises the question, there's really a couple of questions. The annexation is one question, the utility extension is a second question. Now, there are obviously many questions that need to be considered together, but they have to be also independently, independently considered. So that raises the question of whether the church wants to annex and whether we want to annex non-contINUously, if there's another water system that's going to provide that utility service to them rather than city water. So one of the things that we're working on for you all is a policy, a utility extension policy, that goes through a comprehensive review of all city services and finances and says, here are the priorities that we're gonna deal first with infrastructure extensions throughout the city. And then the second part of the document says, these are all the things that we're going to consider, analyze, think about, and how we make a bridge recommendation present to you all. And using that document as a foundation, we're working that through all development teams and the service departments here at the city that would be impacted by either the extension and/or the annexation. We put a staff review together, and we wanna change the process a little bit from how we have previously brought you all extension requests, where you get more of a formal report, a written report, much like what we do for loans now, where it'll go through that policy and have input from the various departments, and give you a written recommendation of what the staff's position is on those requests, and why we take a particular position that we do in our recommendation, and present that to you all for a formal vote, and memorialize that in answer to the applicant, again, very much like what we do with zoning, to try to clean this process up on what Mandy has been and improve upon it. So in our regard, in addition to this particular extension request that happens to a company, a non-contiguous annexation, we have two other utility requests that go outside of our current boundaries right now that we are processing in the same way. I expect there'll be some, some bumps in the road, it's a learning process, this is new for us, it's a new thought process, a new way of doing things, but I feel very good about what we'll be bringing to the next public hearing.
So I guess, Mandy, what is, what are South Bridge Community Churches' options? If they want to have a, a, in terms of specs that they're kind of quoting right now on that site, whether they're offering?
I believe they really gonna have to have the city water system, the fire flows necessary. We advise them it should be at their cost, because this body approved it. They're running some numbers on what it costs to tile an existing system, and if that system can provide fire flow, what they're looking at with that, if they tile that system, they'd probably have to have the huge water storage tank, pressure tank, and talk to Jared, at least one fire pump to boost the pressure, possibly two for a new system. Jared's saying the cost is probably gonna run just as much as what it would cost extending to the city.
So if they were to go another route other than the city, it's probably the same?
There have been some numbers on that, developing a project.
And then go into their sewer, they haven't tiled our sewer. I think on the use of that building, it's probably not insane, so could they develop a system that would work out there, if they had 10 acres?
Yeah, they could put in a sewer installation system, either a brick system or a cement system, right? They're not in operation, that's not the church, and as far as revenue strength for city, it's purpose of the property, that's the language.
No, I, I will, I'm not trying to interrupt Mandy, I promise you I'm not, but I think that all these things that you're asking would be properly done within the public hearing, it's Agenda Item B. So why don't we go ahead and just get to that, and then we can open it up, and I know, I know Stuart here, I see him in the back, frowning, with a furrowed brow. So give him a chance, come up, because you may have some questions for him, so we can do it under that, and I think that'll work better, so. Do I have a consideration of a motion to accept Resolution 2015-30 for the application, 1507-01?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to open up the public hearing for the first reading of ordinance 2015-09?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Are there any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is open. So now at this point, I'm speaking to Councilwoman Bridget, if you wanna go ahead, you were asking about the sewer, and we can open up that, and Stuart can come up.
Yeah, well, maybe we can get a presentation from the church person, so we can ask questions.
Y'all wanna come on up?
You might answer some of that, uh, what we've been asking.
Okay. Name, rank, and serial number?
Yes.
Seriously, name, rank, and serial?
Stuart Moody.
Joseph Schufer.
You wanna tell us about your church, Stuart, and which plans are, and all those kinds of things?
Absolutely. We spent probably a greater portion of the last two years surveying the area all over Bullock County, trying to find, you know, property and find a place that we felt like was going to be conducive for what our, really our hope is, and that's to be a part of such a great community, be a part of what is happening here in Statesboro. And with the growth in that area, with the walking trail that's already there, us tying in with that and being a part of that, that growth there, we just felt like it was a great opportunity for us. That intersection, as you well know, is highly trafficked, a lot of people move through there on a regular basis, and what a better place for a church to be than to be in a very visible place. And so we began to explore those options and talked with, you know, the people that are in that area, talked with those that live there, talked with Ray and his family, George, and the Beesleys, and met with them, and just began to envision what it could look like. So we developed, you know, a plan, an architectural plan, we've got that in mind, and we're excited, and we feel like it's a great fit for us. We look forward to seeing, you know, it come to fruition, so we, and that's just a little bit about who we are at South Bridge and what our plans are. And I'll let Joseph kind of maybe speak to just some of the particulars of it, but that's just the big picture of why we would like to be there and why we feel like it's a vital spot for us, and we wanna partner with the city, the community, the county to make this a better place. I mean, that's just our heart.
As Stuart mentioned, this is something we've been working toward for a couple of years now. We have engaged with an architect firm out of, a part of Key Architecture, which is important to South Carolina, and we were able to give a presentation to Mr. Cheshire and Mandy were there, as other representatives from the city and county officials, just to kind of cast our vision for what that property would look like. We did not come prepared today to bring on that, didn't realize we were gonna have an opportunity to speak for you, but we do have renderings, we do have schematic plans of what that facility would look like, and are, as was mentioned, working to try to determine exactly what would be the best option for us from a water service standpoint. So it is something that we knew, the conversation we needed to have, the Right Star meeting, to determine whether or not the city for the next year or so plans for development out of that way, because we knew that development was taking place, and then came about six tenths of a mile from our property. And in order to be able to have that conversation, filing annexation request was part of the process, and we're most appreciative of Mr. Cheshire and Mandy for their time Thursday. We did just have that meeting Thursday, have not had the time following that meeting to compile the rest of our information on cost estimates for our own system, but are working with some local experts in their fields to be able to provide that information when we follow up with the committee, so. Go ahead, answer any questions.
Well, the first one, I guess, is in your discussion, why, why city water, not, you know, why, why city services?
Well, the water, we, the sewage to us, as was mentioned, we aren't particularly requesting the sewage, it would be for water for fire protection. The state fire marshal rules on, I'm not a fire marshal, but with, without water protection would limit the occupancy we could have in our worship center to under 300, and that would be too small right now for us to be able to do that. So the main purpose of this would be fire protection for our worship center.
Would anybody else like to speak in this public hearing?
And I guess, you talked, you guys mentioned, or you don't have specific numbers, abandoned town specific numbers, but you mentioned that a private water and sewer or tying on in cities is gonna be comparable as far as costs are concerned, so you guys are prepared to pay those, help pay those costs?
We are discussing that, yes, sir. We are, we have, we have a working budget, let's put it that way, from a construction budget standpoint, and this would be the final figure to plug in there from a water standpoint, be it we partner with the city to help get it to that point where we do our own system, whatever we think's gonna be most fiscally responsible for those that are helping to support the building of the church.
So I guess what Councilman Boyd was asking, when we do, and just so you know, just to be clear about the process and all that, we'll wait to hear back from the county, and if the county says okay, at that point, we'll schedule the second reading and whether or not to pass annexation request, et cetera. So within that period of time, you'll be able to look at your budget estimates and what you can and cannot do?
Yes, ma'am.
And be able to make that part of the public hearing here?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know what the timelines would be on that, hearing back from the county?
I could not tell you, but I can defer to colleagues here and see what they think.
Well, I think the, I think the ball's gonna be in the county's court at that point, I mean, they'll have to, before the annexation could get through, they'll have to vote to allow, so. They control their agenda, they control what they're gonna do. It won't, your annexation will not happen unless and until the county affirmatively votes to approve.
You have on top of couches, so.
Would you like?
I'd be happy to share that contact information.
You're lucky, yes. So we have it.
Yeah, we have to share that with you if you need it.
As Stuart mentioned, there's, there's already some development taking place out that direction, and, and so that's why we really think it's in the best interest of both parties in the long run, and you guys have obviously realized that as well with already having cost estimates on the design of the system, so we think it can be a good conversation, just a conversation we need to have to figure out the best way to go about doing it.
I would agree, and I will tell you, as soon as, as soon as they do their deal, they're part of it, we'll obviously, you know, put you immediately back on the agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
So my suggestion would be just to give them a call, you know, push that a little bit.
Will y'all notify them and let them know so that they'll know that we are contacting them?
They've already been notified unofficially, and now we'll do it officially.
And I'm sure Mandy is already working with them on that, so my assumption would be that between the two parties, they can get that ball rolling, so. Y'all have any questions for us?
I'm just appreciative of the committee's time Thursday. It was very, I very well, some cities should be proud of, from the Right Star meeting process is very good.
Well, we'll say this, yeah, I don't know how many folks know this, but at our last GMA conference in Savannah this past June, Mandy presented, actually, that Right Star process as part of a presentation that was very much complimented and well-received, so we thank you for that. Obviously, it serves a very good purpose. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to speak in this public hearing? All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing regarding ordinance 2015-09?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, excuse me, any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 6, second reading and consideration of a motion to approve ordinance 2015-08 and ordinance amending the solid waste code of ordinances, Chapter 66. Jason, is that yours?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If you recall, at our last council meeting, there was a discussion regarding some of our proposals for the elderly loving come credit, and some of that discussion was centered around timeline on reapplication. Marco, Alvin, and myself have studied that and come back with some amendments to push that timeline down to three-year process. We're very confident that that's doable and something we can do.
Three?
Three. Correct. And so we bring this, this to you, expect for you.
Initially, it was just one right.
Correct.
Okay.
Three was a good idea.
Yeah.
We, we agree with that.
We were just following with Savannah and initial, yeah, we support three.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, sir. They like you to be honest with you.
Any other questions for Jason before I ask for a motion, excuse me? Okay, do I have a motion to approve ordinance 2015-08?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Jason, for doing that.
Great, sir. Thank you.
What, and I know I already asked this one time, we asked it at the last meeting, Jason, but what's the plan for getting this information out so that people can take advantage of it?
Marco and I will be working together to send it and information through, through the website, through the actually, only doing today that I've read my name, but.
Should we put something in the watch?
Yeah, I'll have to get them to see what I have. I'll look for ready for this first public meeting.
Well, I'm not saying you do it tomorrow.
Yeah. But, yeah, we will definitely work on it. That's typically what we do with any other, uh, puzzle.
We've got several venues, we'll get it out. In fact, we're speaking at AARP in about two weeks, maybe somewhere, right there.
Okay.
That's a target word.
It is! Agenda item seven, consideration of a motion to approve resolution 2015-28. I'm going to ask, I guess, Jason, you'll be speaking on this one as well? Or is this a man? Come on up, man.
You should have the resolution that Jeff Grant, HR, directed together on what we're requesting. As you all may recall, over the last three budget retreats, we devised the mayor council that we were, the water service department was in need of adding a meter reader as well as a two-man service crew. But with the approval by you guys to fund the conversion to auto-read meter reader system on the FlexNet, we will be able to not add these additional personnel, but be able to reclassify the existing meter readers. Two of the existing meter reader positions we're questioning go to a meter system technician. We've also, you should have a copy of the job description for those two positions, who go from a pay grade 11 to a 12. One of the meter reader positions would be reclassified as the water, civil crew supervisor, and the other meter reader position would be reclassified as the water system, water source system operator, which would create a new crew for our department, which has been ongoing with the, so we'll be able to do this without actually adding people, just reallocating to these positions. And I would request your consideration and approve this adjustment to pay the compensation plan as resolution reads.
Now, in doing this and reclassifying this, does this require that these folks be retrained or additionally trained in any way?
They have been under training through the process of us, again, back four years ago, y'all approved the pilot study, $90,000,000, where we replaced about 500 meters to make sure this system works. It was not by FlexNet, we do a collector station, but by a drive-by with a laptop, everything worked good there. Then we came back to you and asked you to fund over two years, $1.25 million each of two years, and then a division of $400,000 this past year. With the budget amendment that's on the agenda today, those money, the remaining funds from the, what was funded those years, we can move forward into this year to finish construction. We've got a pre-construction meeting with contractor, August 10th, as y'all have already approved the contract. And so that's pretty much where we're at right now. And did I answer your question?
No.
In the middle of explaining it, I realized what, and what was that again?
Okay, let's try this one more.
Start.
But I did appreciate that. It's good input. The folks that are being reclassified, have they received any additional training? Will they receive any additional training? Do they require any additional training? Does this increase their skill level?
Yes, it does. It's a lot more technical.
Okay.
Over the past two to three years, as we've been trying to implement this convergence of the auto-read, they've learned to do the installation of the transmitters, coordinate that with the meter, do the programming. They have to add the longitude and latitude coordinates in the system. So the collector stations, we actually have three throughout the system that collects all these readings. So yes, they have been trained to some extent. We've got new software coming in, they'll be trained on that. Currently, we'll be using the 400 system. They'll be trained on the difference, the disparate type reports and stuff that can be generated. And from those reports, they'll be out in the field verifying readings. They can buy these reports, it'll generate a report to where it's indication of potential leak at a customer's meter, a residential, a commercial, whatever, they'll go out and verify that. And they can do that at any time during any day. They don't have to wait for the end of the month. They can, as these routes are read, we could, we could say we could read one route a day within five, 10, 15 minutes the route's read. It's not like meter readers out there walking around reading. And they can go ahead and run their edit on these different reports. And instead of a leak, leaking for a month before it's corrected, it'll be done pretty much within a day or two. They'll be trained on all that. And then, like I said, with the new software, they'll be trained on it also.
So what you're saying is they have to bring a better skill set?
It's, it's a lot more technical than just going out reading meters.
Okay. That's what I was getting at.
I mean, one of the reasons we made this trial was to reduce the overhead as far as salaries are concerned, so would this mean we're not having to, not after you grow, have to add?
We're gaining the two-man service crew that we needed. And of course, we don't need an additional meter reader because we're doing away with those positions and going to a more technical position, a meter system technician. And I will tell you, Jeff did a fantastic job. I disagree with the reclassification originally, but actually, he and myself and Robert Cheshire sat down, went through everything. Jeff did do a real good job. It's fair. So I agree with what, what he's recommending on the resolution as far as the meter system technician being, going from a grade 11 to a 12. I originally requested a 14 because it's sort of a standalone position, doesn't have anybody like a supervisor actually with them day in and day out like a service crew.
Okay. So what were your thoughts on that, Jeff? From a classification standpoint?
I'm just looking at different cities and looking at the market in terms of looking at different organizations that utilize FlexNet, as well as similar programs that should play a factor, and kind of looking at kind of how they reclassify their different positions, plus looking at the market. And then third, looking at some of our other positions that are still situated, and kind of making sure that we didn't put them in their own classification.
And that is in the package also, the different cities he did a survey on. But like I said, he did a very thorough job. I can agree with his recommendation.
Okay.
Any other questions?
How's your foot?
Is it? Yes, it's healed up. The doctor said no more shoes until about two weeks.
Free.
Still have to wear this foot.
These modifications are in the 2016 budget?
They were. Are.
Were are?
They are.
Were?
Where would they find that no longer be?
And you will see later on in the agenda what we've got, some trucks are purchased, and one of them is an utility truck that's been in the budget for the last three years because of FlexNet didn't move along as quickly as we had planned. We bumped it from year to year, so it's, it's on the agenda. A couple of our trucks have been considered this way.
There's none further questions, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve resolution 2015-28.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item eight, update on the current status of the stormwater management and utility program.
I'm going to defer to Marcos, but while he's walking up, if you remember, it's several weeks now, Marcos handed out a green package to y'all, with some frequently asked questions and some other items. And being that the billing was going to start, the stormwater utility billing is next going to start this month, I thought it was timely to go ahead and give a, just give you a very brief update on a couple of key items, and maybe show a couple of pictures as well.
I probably don't have some pictures, but my phone died a couple of weeks ago, well, a week ago, and I kind of lost it. So apologize for that.
I take that much.
Thank you, thank you. Good on you.
I do have, I do have some information on the stormwater program.
What's happening with getting the phone replaced?
Just locked, I guess, I don't know, it just died in there.
There's a storm there that we don't need to know in there.
Well, no, no, it's just.
He's got it in the phone.
Yes, I have the phone proofed. But now I just, I lock, I guess.
What a phone, what a disaster.
Well, it's an overflowing storm ditch.
Mayor, Councilor, I want to give you a brief update, a quick where we're at for our stormwater utilities program. Basically, we're set starting this month. Billing should be set. We have a few accounts that we have to square away, just square away, but minor, there's nothing impeding for us to start beginning this month. We are in the process of trying to hire a maintenance crew. We're leaning towards trying to get some of current employees to move over to the city program. We're in the process of advertising internally. Hopefully, we can entice some of our more experienced employees to come over so we can start off with some experience. Hopefully, by the end of the month, maybe next month, we should have some crews, maybe not the whole crew yet, off board, but some to start off with. As far as maintenance, right now, we're just basically complaint, driven where we have complaints, we'll go and address those complaints. Coming up with a system on trying to document all these complaints so that we can address them in a timely manner. And also, we have the recurring complaints, we can investigate them personally and make sure we find the big issues and not just go back and back and bad even with small issues. As far as the maintenance, we're trying to come up with a five-year rotation where once we get our inventory of all of the storm structures, ditches, anything that the city maintains, we want to be able to physically, you know, touch and visually inspect all structures with a five-year rotation. I believe that, that plan also gives us a timeline whenever we have a complaint. We can actually give appropriate dates when we can get to those issues instead of just leaving it up in the air, so we'll get to it, we'll get to it, if they won't get to it, we'll be there in a month, we'll be there in a couple of weeks. I think probably they'll appreciate that in a moment, they'll just send their way now, a sudden, two months later, nothing happens. And at least they'll have something to look forward to and know that we are, we are actually working on. We also have a couple of capital building projects that we're going to plug. Right now, we're trying to get RFP, or request prices for two CIP projects. One is PZ Road for Mill Precipulatory, I believe. You got to get out of that ditch, it's pretty eroded, and we have a lot of foam work there, a lot of velocity. Create a real bad situation on the ditch. Basically, we're just trying to manage it to keep it there. So we're going to consult an engineer first and see if they can come up with a design so we can correct that issue there. Also, South College, right there next to the railroad tracks, there's a culvert, I think it's 84-inch pipe, and we have bad erosion, and we have to repair the pipe there at the end, just because the erosion causes it to fall off, and we have to bring it back and replace it. So we want to put a head wall there so we can, we can correct that issue so that in the future, we won't have to go back and repair that pipe anymore. The other one I wanted to talk to you about was that green packet I gave out last month to, I just planned a little bit was in there. Typically, that package's informational, most of it is things that we hand out to the public or we have on the website. The first one was a usually credit manual that basically describes all the credits that we, that the stormwater utility offers on a fee. It's for non-single-family and single-family residential properties. And it's, it describes all the information needed, the documents needed, what the credit, what kind of conditions do you need for you to apply for the credits. The other one was a customer service manual. And that's something that the consultant EPG, you know, they put together for us so that we can help, for example, like customer service clerks downstairs, answer questions, know what the program is, kind of general information just for them, you know. Also has documents on how to go about solving any inquiries or problems the public will have with their stormwater. You know, also put in there some educational pamphlets. That's something we give out to the public for public education, kind of lends public knowledge and understand why stormwater is important, why we, why we need to worry about it. It just states the issues that, that are urban, against urban areas, how stormwater gets polluted and ways of how to lower that, that, those pollution in our stormwater. The other, the last part of there was a frequently asked question. That's another sheet that our consultant EPG provided. And basically, it just, questions and the answers to them, and basically just most of the questions that are regularly asked for these programs. And just to help the council, if one day you get approached by citizens asking questions, just to help you have, be able to address those questions. And if ever gets to a point where we need a little bit more information, we'll get all the same to you, but just to give you a general information on the program and how it's working, how it's put together. And also, I wanted to let you know that we hired a technician, so we have a second person that's helped me with stormwater-related issues, billing, putting together CIPs for, for putting out to get the RFPs. But her name is Kiara Martin, she's a Georgia Southern graduate. She graduated in 2014, she's a civil engineer major. So she's been a very, very good addition to the program, to the department. She's come along very strong, and we're pleased with her. She's very smart, and she is catching on very quick. Basically, that's all I have. I don't know if you have any questions, anything I missed, and please, if you have any answer.
My questions will come along when the neighborhood starts.
Flood?
Starts flooding me with, yeah, flooding and then flooding me with quick. I know you've done a lot of work on this, and I appreciate you taking the wheel, and that's my job, appreciate how you've done.
Thank you.
Let me ask you something, Marcos. Because listen to Councilman Riggs and, you know, agree 100%, so I want us to get a lot of good PR out of this.
Yes, ma'am.
So are we, for instance, on the truck, those kinds of things, are they going to be marked stormwater utility?
I think that was the plan originally. Jason had it on there.
They've got stormwater on them?
Big letters.
Okay. I just want to make sure, big letters? I want them to outsee, because I want folks to see the difference between what they're doing and other folks not.
Yeah, we talked about them having a brand, and I've challenged the department, and they challenge themselves, to be very responsive and very proactive. Remember, we're not going to just throw a fee out there on everybody, they're going to be seen. And we've got an opportunity here to do something very positive, and that's what we're going to do.
That's what I was asking, how, from a community perspective and communicating and getting the word out and being visible besides marking trucks, what are our plans for that? Will we have a community meeting where people can come and ask questions about which plans are, how to get in touch with you if they have concerns?
Right now, we are in a request, I guess, based with a friend like this, they, Councilman Moore, invited us to one of the neighbor association meetings. And we were out there, and we spoke on the stormwater program, kind of what I did right today. I've done that on a few occasions already. Whenever we have complaints, we take the time right there to talk about the stormwater program and what it is going to entail and the benefits that can come along with it. A lot of the main issues with the puzzle right now is, is lack of visibility. They probably complain sometimes it takes months just, not to put our crews on, it's right out there real stretched, and we don't have nobody that's actually just stormwater, so that they have to share their task with roads and cutting grass, so. Plus, our equipment is not up to power right now, so we have some issues. And we go out there and assure them, you know, we want to be proactive, and we want to create a program where whenever we have a complaint, we address it as quickly as possible. But that's the reason for the five-year cycle, we can actually give information out of forests when we can be there. And we can't, we can't make false promises or hit pause through the cracks. And next year, there's still nothing happened. That's something that we're trying to address and correct. We've had a, what we call a top 10 public meeting, where we sent out letters to the, I guess, the top 10 highest leaders in the city. And we, that was back in March, we had a public meeting, and we also sent a little notice on our, on billing to let people know. And I also appreciate Al Hacomet from St. Harold, he's done a couple of articles, and that's. also put the word out. But as far as work, so we always try to go out and meet the citizens out in the field if they call in, they have any questions with the credits. We don't mind going out to their house and sending out with them. Usually what we do there is we take that time also to do a public education and talk to them as much as we can about the program.
And we'll be reaching out to all our associations and community organizations, be more involved, be more active, and more civic events, and calling some of the houses when we need to.
Okay.
Public education outreach. If you keep so big, you might have such a great idea.
I was actually running a couple of books for y'all speaking, trying to pass it over to Robert, see if that's scheduled something.
Yes. Another thing, one of the credits is, it's volunteer work, for example, like a downstream, things of that nature, you know. We want to create programs so that people can apply and volunteer and be able to qualify for that credit. And that's another aspect of outreach and public education as well, have that opportunity to show progress.
Okay.
Have you been in touch with Lisa Lee regarding that? I think she could be a big help with the presentation. I think, you know, slapping that credit packet on people is a bit of a mommy.
Yes.
You know, you need, you're like a one-pager, you know what I'm saying? And Lissa is, could be a good resource for that, you know, kind of condensing the complex into something more simple and manageable.
And almost get the information out and work on the Center for Sustainability, or partner with George Southern on some projects in the future. I see a lot of positive impacts.
There are some great possibilities.
That's true.
Five thousand rain barrels.
We'll be exploring all those too, we'll hopefully be able to do some programs like water service.
Recycle.
I was just sitting here going, I hope that doesn't happen.
Oh, that's just the worst.
Maybe we can convert those to rain barrels. We've got some cart conversion potential.
There you go.
Thank you, Marco.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Roaming rain barrels, you have a few of them already?
Rolling rain barrels. Sounds like you did need to, do you? Okay, Agenda Item Nine, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2015-33 in ordinance for the temporary ninety-day moratorium on fireworks for sales. And I don't have my sheets, sheet, sheet, so who's taking this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody knows this year, the past House Bill 110 was realized, sale of consumer-grade fireworks. This isn't a moratorium on the sale of fireworks, it's a, it is a moratorium so we can get some idea where the permanent retail sales facilities to sell these things will be zoned, with proper zoning of these things. The state law preempted almost all local regulation of the sale of consumer fireworks, except zoning. And talking with Mandy, our zoning code, those zoning codes really contemplate the set of, the idea of these free standing places where fireworks evolved, because fireworks were contraband in Georgia until they passed this bill. So the idea with this moratorium is, is to give planning and development ninety days to sort of think about and modify the zoning code to say which zoning districts you want these things. You may want them in all of them, you may want them in certain ones, you may want them in one. But give an idea of where you're going to zone this system and provide some time to modify the zoning code. Is that right, Mandy?
Hey, Mandy, what were your concerns about, your thoughts about modifying the zoning code and putting the moratorium in place to be allowed, to be able to do that?
Apparently, the concerns here are the life-saving concerns. There's some things, usually, that the fire department has recommended that we have, for example, a separation requirement between a fireworks retailer and a gas station. Just the obvious things when you begin to look at the same implications between selling fireworks, but our local ordinance is, due to zoning, does not currently provide for that, so we need the opportunity to apply these things into our own and go through the adoption process for that so that we can meet the new requirements in the current law, which is to allow the sale of fireworks to be sold away in the Texas.
And this wasn't addressed in the state?
That's what it was on. The essence of the state law was pretty much to say fireworks are legal for sale in the city, all cities and counties in the state of Georgia, and hand off at the local level, except for, there's, that's, that's the only thing they gave us the opportunity to regulate. We just want to take a look at it from a life-saving perspective.
And so you have something for us, any days?
We're doing ninety days.
Presidential.
In town for sales of New Year's Eve fireworks? That's what I'm hearing. Y'all have any further questions before I ask for a motion? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2015-34?
Come on in.
You have a second?
Say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Our Agenda Item Number Nine is consideration of a motion to award purchase of two Ford F-350 four-by-fours for the utility bodies, Robert's Truck Center, the amount thirty-five thousand, by line two eighty-four, Mr. Breaker.
Darren, I want to say one thing, you're going to see several purchase requests at this point, and the reason there's so many together, it's really two reasons. One is, if you remember, we started trying to put more variances and rezonings at the second meeting, council meetings in the month, and then trying to put the purchases and some other items similar to that. At the first meeting, just to, I think it makes more sense and it makes the meetings flow better. Then the other reason is several of these purchases have either been put off for years, or at least from last year, just that we were getting fifty years, we could make it, we could wait another year, we did that. So some of these are, they're easy now, maybe have been here for a while, but we put them on. Sorry, thanks, Darren.
Thank you. Another reason we did is we had several units, so maybe we could get some better volume pricing. Items ten through thirteen are very similar vehicles, they're utility trucks, they differ in, you know, two or four-door, four-by-four, of course, low carrying capacity, but they're all utility-type trucks. Number ten, these will be for new water utility. And we sent invitations to bid to all local dealers and our usual out-of-town dealers and received two, two responses. In this case, we had four different packages in this one overall bid pack. In this case, we recommend Robert's Truck Center for two F-350s in the amount of thirty-six thousand, five ninety-two eighty-four each, for a total of seventy-three thousand, eighty-five and sixty-eight cents. Any questions?
Okay, in that case, I have a motion to award the purchase of two Ford F-350 four-by-four with a utility body to Robert's Truck Center in the amount of seventy-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Come on in.
You have a second?
Say it.
Any discussion?
Mayor, I have a question, this may, this may, I'm slow with knowledge, but since all of these are Robert's Truck Center, and do we have to do each of them in one, or can we do them all at one time?
I'm going to borrow here.
No. I'm just thinking, I mean, that's.
I don't have a problem with that, it may be one very, very long motion, but that's fine.
Something you could have been on the same agenda, and, so you're talking about items not ten through thirteen.
They're all, it looks like they're all under CIP, they're all, they've already all been budgeted, they've all been approved, they're all at the same place.
I can just ask one little short after that, without discussion, you can do that, no discussion, I'll take it all.
I think we did, we have to say.
We did that already, I'm trying to say good things, we're in, we're in.
The only thing I would add is number eleven and twelve has a recommendation surplus on property, so, and that in the motions.
Okay, I'll do it. All right, so, excuse me, any further discussion? All in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do you have, excuse me, any choices?
I was just saying, was there anything else in the next three that we need to know about besides the surplus?
Just eleven and twelve has the surplus.
No, but I mean, aside from that.
Okay.
They all, they all came in on the budget as well.
Now, that's something we like to do. That's a good point. Do I have a motion to award the purchase of a Ford F-350 with a utility body to Robert's Truck Center in the amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars, eighty-four cents, and to authorize surplus and disposition of a nineteen ninety-four Ford truck?
Come on in.
You have a second?
Say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do I have consideration of a motion to award the purchase of a Ford F-250 with a utility body to Robert's Truck Center in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-eight cents, and to authorize surplus and disposition of a two thousand and one Dodge Ram truck?
So who?
You have a second?
Say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any more ayes?
Aye.
Okay, opposed, motion carries. Do I have the consideration of a motion to award the purchase of three Ford F-450s with utility body trucks to Robert's Truck Centers in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents?
So who?
You have a second?
Say it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Councilwoman.
I do want to commend Darren and the staff, they do an excellent job of trying to find the best purchase price, but they also give the locals every opportunity to bid if there's an opportunity.
That would be terrific.
And he's on. Yeah, Robert's where that?
It's in Texas.
Yeah, it's down on the nine-five south, right in Richmond Hills.
He's our, Mitchell, your contact?
Yes.
Hardly, hardly that low.
Okay, Agenda Eighteen, consideration of a motion to approve the purchase of sixty cradle point modems in the amount of sixty-four thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty cents from RC and Communications. Yes?
Mayor, Council, just quickly, I'll brief on this and get Brian Tatum to come up and answer any in-depth questions because it is above my technical expertise. The cradle point modems will be used as the wireless connection in the patrol vehicles and are needed with the records management system that's being updated to Sun Guard. This project would come from PE1, it's already approved in the SLOSS purchases for the vehicle conversions and the funding's there, and prepared to go forward, and I'll defer questions
Any questions? All right. This is something that we've taught with public safety, to start adding these to the price of our cars. And the biggest need for this was the constant connectivity that we needed for the GDS locations where we have a better feel in dispatch as to exactly where these cars are. Our current, our current solution is more of a consumer-grade, and we're not extremely happy with the quality and the data signal at all times, and we feel that this is a much better solution to give them the faster response when having a constant connection. And this is, we're also, with these consumer-grade devices, with the heaps associated in the cars, we're having batteries starting to blow up and different things in the building. We'll have a better solution with a trunk-mounted modem in these cars. And so, even though it is kind of sort of brought out as a result of this new software, it's also something that we've been kicking around and trying to get a solution for a couple of years, and so we're making the move to do this. And I'll be glad to answer. This is still, even though the purchase of the modem is not state contract, we didn't supply some modems, but it is with a Verizon partner that works closely with us, and I feel that their support, they've been very good through this process, and they've actually lived some modems so we can test these and so.
Any further questions?
So if they're connected all the time, is this going to also increase our data usage?
Under state contract, we have unlimited data usage for these devices. So even if they do go up, now if we, if somebody's doing, I think we set a limit on about twelve gigabytes a month, ten to twelve gigabytes a month, it kind of trips on our system, we start monitoring exactly what is using it, but we do, we have.
I think your data usage monitor is very important.
Yes. So, but we do, we do, yes, yes. Luckily, these car, luckily, these cars.
These cars won't be driving in China.
Or not crossing the Great Wall. But we, according to our contract, we use up to a hundred or two hundred gigabytes a month, and Verizon will come back to us and kind of say some stuff that we're well in the agreement of our contract.
I'm just telling you, carriers, what's the shelf life of this modem?
We are hoping that we get four years out of it. You know, with it being a more commercial grade, we're getting two to three years out of our MiFi devices, and it's a stretch to get it there. So we are hoping that we extend it by a year or two because, you know, your price per year.
How much are the MiFi devices?
MiFi devices are free, but they're also blowing up in cost, and volumes are slowing. And so, you know, this is a new and current cost that we have, but we just feel that we're asking these devices to do industrial-type applications and to manipulate them into industrial-type devices. But it's not at any additional extent, it's on our monthly data rates.
Okay.
Purchased hard.
We paid by, we paid for, we're paying for this unforeseen by power.
It comes from PE1 SLOSS, which is the vehicle conversions, which people can read into the new vehicles, and I'm a little more optimistic than Brian, I have my residency in the second year, probably, by doing all the operations, but I'll keep on that call.
We, we, and to be honest, we don't know how long it will last. Yeah, hopefully.
But it sounds like you're fairly confident they will not blow up.
Yes.
The MiFi's that you have right now do not operate as a GPS unit?
No, they do not.
These new ones will operate as a GPS locator. Can you theorize, I mean, you could have some little screen and have a map that showed where everybody was?
That is true.
You're going to have that, you have that.
Well, you wouldn't have with the Wi-Fi, though. You need the modem to, I mean, you got to be able to identify where the Wi-Fi is, but you can't do that, all right?
This increases our connectivity state, like the amount of time that we are connected, because on these MiFi devices, we have known weak spots, and this, although it doesn't completely eradicate it, it condenses the known weak spots to a smaller footprint. We can't control the Verizon network, although we have been in a lot of talks on the public safety side and from our side, and they are adding resources to state level. We showed them. And, uh, we showed them our map of what we are looking at, our connectivity goes. And, and they have made a commitment and have, and we have seen some action as a result of our talks with Verizon.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of sixty Cradle Point modems in the amount of sixty-four thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty cents from R C N Communications?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consideration of a motion to approve award contract to Southeastern Civil Inc. for the construction of Savannah Avenue Improvements Project in the amount of one million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
Darren, are you ready to get the specifics on it? I'll, I'll give a recap as you come up, you got that information with you?
How much?
Savannah Avenue, yeah. I can do it right here. Y'all just recall, we've talked about this project for a while and we got, finally got it in the, in the budget this year. This, what I like about the project is not only going to include water, sewer upgrades, replacement of sidewalks, extension of some sidewalks that we need in some areas, uh, but also it's going to resurface. It's going to smooth the road and resurface it, had some striping. And I really like the fact that we're going to add some traffic calming at several locations. And in addition to the traffic calming, which is going to be done by islands in the middle, uh, which tightens your lane width and slows traffic down, but there's going to be, I believe, three locations where there'll be pedestrian crossings in the islands that will stand out because we'll have the crosswalks striped in a certain manner. And if we have the funding, we're going to wait and see how the project's going before we add one of the alternative alternates that are in there. But that would be to put in a, a, a paver type, the faux pavers that we have at the West Main, South College intersection that have been working real well, doing real good. And we'll add those in the three locations in place of just regular stripe, crosswalk striping. If, uh, get the funding, old problem, you're running into something unforeseen. Good project, we had four bids. Uh, they range from the low of one million, eight forty-seven, seven ninety-two, thirty-five, which is what's supermated for consideration, to a high bid of two million, eighty-four thousand, two sixty-seven, twenty. So the grouping was good. Our estimate was a million, um, nine fifty, so that it'll be a little bit under. This particular contractor has done work, uh, successfully for us on several projects, including working on the current C V G project, uh, drainage project that we have going on to the recommendation from staff as to award to the low bidder. There is, uh, Southeastern Civil, the amount of one million, eight forty-seven, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents. And we'll get started on this project, and I believe it's a two hundred and seventy day project. I, I think, obviously, like, we get in and out sooner if we can, but that'll look, it'll present the opportunity to juggle some things around, um, and get going.
When will that start?
Uh, we've got, usually it takes three to four weeks to get it going just because we still gotta sign contracts, you gotta get his bonds, we have to confirm that those are, uh, proper and, uh, for the state of Georgia and meet all the requirements, but we'll get it going just as quick as we can, get those contracts. If y'all approve it, for the mayor, for her signature.
Now, are we still looking at the possibility of shutting down Savannah during the?
Yeah, we talked about, we talked about that in our mandatory pre-bid. As a minimum, obviously, we'll have to keep the sidewalks passable, but there's some talk if things work out or at the proper place that we would shut, come back to y'all and see if y'all are okay with us shutting it down for that even.
Yeah, let's see where construction, how construction lives at that point.
Right. I'd like to get it up and get it.
The less safe the construction is, the more important it is to shut it down.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that we can get the traffic rerouted during that time. And which, what day of the week does it fall on this year?
Uh, I don't know, when, when are we doing Trick or Treat on Saturday? Thirty-first is on Saturday in North Florida.
Okay, so, you know, we're, we'll work toward that.
Basically shut down for the weekend.
So it's a good idea, we'll, we'll look at it and see how things go.
The whole weekend? Sure.
We skip on golf courses and a bunch of golf carts and then you saw the market hill.
There's plenty, there's plenty of ways to get around. Yeah, East Main's, there are plenty of ways to get around.
Okay. Did you, well, we bring that back to council. Do I have any other, uh, any other questions from Robert on this project? Or ask for a motion? Okay, do I have a motion to approve award contract to Southeastern Civil Inc. for the construction of Savannah Avenue Improvement Project in the amount of one million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety-two and thirty-five cents?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, deny sixteen, consideration of a motion to award a contract to perform a job classification and compensation study to Evergreen Solutions in the amount thirty-five thousand. There are plenty to come up because I'm sure there'll be a question here.
Well, we started out by saying we sent out an R F P for a job classification compensation study. We sent it to nine potential firms. We did send it to Carl Vincent, uh, they did not respond, if anybody had that question. We had a six-member team, pretty diverse. We rated them on a hundred-point scale, ranked them one to five, and ended up with an average, uh, standing or finishing point. As you can see, the Evergreen actually was everybody's first choice, so they got a one. Their, their cost was thirty-five thousand to do the study. It was unanimous decision to recommend, uh, Evergreen Solutions in the amount thirty-five thousand to do the study. Any questions about the process we'd like to answer? I think Jeff checked some references and background, and he's got that information as well.
Good thing was, not only were, I think it was unanimous on selecting, but they were the lowest cost as well.
So when did I miss this? When did you say it would be done, call the study date to be done?
I, the, in the timeline, it's anywhere from, uh, four to six months. Probably more than, uh, four, actually more than about four to five months, to be correct in your packet. You, you see, did you go to everything back here? Yeah, about four to five months. Our goal is at mid-year to come to y'all with a recommendation.
That's what I was wondering, as part of the budget process, will this come in at times to be included and reviewed for that?
Almost, yeah.
Okay.
They, they have a very detailed supplemental packet. If anyone will stop by and, and view it, I'm glad to sit down with you. It's very well broken out and detailed.
Any questions?
Just surprised G M A doesn't offer something, it seems like. It just, it just seems like, you know, we keep doing this. Every few years you gotta do it, so, I don't know, it seems like we wish G M A had something more, uh, had, had a structure in place where, where you could do this. Because it seems like we just, I don't know, we keep talking about salaries, never, never, never comes off the table.
All right, do I have a motion to award a contract to perform a job classification compensation study to Evergreen Solutions L L C in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Consideration of a motion to award the purchase of a C and G powered thirty-one yard automated refuse truck to New Way for the N J P A co-op contract in the amount of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. There is no way that that was going to be a tie on that bill.
I put a little explanation in there. It, how those contracts work are similar to the H D A C contract that Houston Gallus and that we purchased a few items off of. These co-op programs are open to local governments, take advantage of volume and, and flexibility. This National Joint Powers Alliance, N J P A, uh, we had, obviously, came very, very close to the budget. But how these work is you have a base unit on this contract co-op package and you can customize it. You want a cost plus based on the contract. So that's the explanation of how it comes so close to the budget. You know, we have certain features we need, uh, in this item, the side loader, it comes to the amount of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine ninety-nine, ninety-six. And that's our recommendation to award it to New Way for this amount. And if approved, we also want the surplus of two thousand and three auto car Wayne Kirk tender refuse truck. Just doesn't need to replace.
You get on the note again, it is a compressed natural gas use.
Yes.
The, uh, the others, I believe, have been working real well. We're very pleased.
That's right, we got three garbage trucks now with compressed natural gas. If there are any problems with it, it'd be great.
Will this one be painted similar?
Yes. Same manufacturer, it'll be painted similar, um, part of the branding that we talked about, or, uh, C G and with our car escalation. Everything's been going great so far, so. Really, really pleased with, um, with the way things have been going. I think that things, um, um, that the representative amount of work that we put into it on Friday.
I will add that we did attend, uh, several trade show too and, and did a lot of research on the combination of the body and the truck. And I, I think that's no accident, that we had very successful with this combination of parts.
Okay, do I have a motion to award the purchase of a C and G powered thirty-one yard automated refuse truck to New Way for the N J P A co-op contract in the amount of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Addendum eighteen, consideration of a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash thirty-two.
Uh, I'm going to defer to Cindy, but on her way up, just wanted, we're achieving this earlier in the year for a budget amendment. We're gonna, it's, we've talked about this, it felt like we needed to do more. It's, it's going to be all up to speed, it's easier for staff to keep up with those as well rather than have to write them down and remember them, maybe do them quarterly. So I think we're going to try to do them maybe every month or every couple of months and see how that goes.
Yes, it, it depends on the, if we have any. I don't want to do one, a budget amendment for one item, but I do plan to try to do them more often. It may be, you know, it could be every two months or something like that. Um, we did have some carry forward projects from FY twenty fifteen and one or two new projects, um, that y'all have already voted on for the purchase of. So if you have any questions, I may have any answer.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash thirty-two?
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Deny nineteen, consideration of a motion to approve dates for three public hearings on the proposed two thousand and fifteen calendar year ad valorem property tax mileage rate for the city of State Square.
Thanks, Darren. These are pretty standard, uh, but we're open, Sue can help me here. We can change the time potentially of one, if it works a little bit better. I think the dates we'd like to try to stick with if we can. One of them, the last one is at a council meeting, is that right? For the other two are not a council meeting. These are the hearings where we will, um, consider the mileage rate. And, uh, our budget is based on this year of not raising the mileage rate, but rather holding it at the current mileage rate, which will, one requirement to hold a three meeting is considered a tax increase if your tax digest went up. And you're holding your mileage rate the same. So I guess, um, any thoughts on these times? You'll see on the twenty-fifth, we're meeting at four-thirty and six. We have talked about, you know, it could be twelve and a six if that works better for you, but putting these two together, we thought might be easier on the off.
When does this need to be done?
Sue can help me with that.
I would, I guess, for council board, I suppose, but when would you have to get those three meetings in, Miss Sue?
Right. I just don't.
These are the days that we have to have, we're going to get the sources in time for you. Get September, get it printed, get it to the county, get it approved, get it stated. This is the timeline that we have.
So we're going to have all three done by the September 1st?
September first is the day that we have to have everything coming through so we can get it to the county. So then to do that, get it stated, get it out, get it placed. And get it sent out to the customer, to the first, within that timeline, plus the nine days.
It's not like you have to do one day.
And those five cities do it, that's why they do it.
It's going to be huge.
We know we can do one in a half an hour before the council meeting on Thursday. Could we, could we move the first one up to the eighteen? Just do it half an hour before council?
It has to be seven days.
Seven days what?
Seven days between the first hearing and the second.
Yeah. We have them on the same day right now.
So one of those, one of those is not going to be a council.
Right, you have to have it on the same deadline.
Because if you have it on the eighteenth, you'd have to have a deal on the twenty-fifth, correct?
Eighteenth, twenty-fifth, and the first.
Well, you're still going to come in on the twenty-fifth, so. Yeah, you're, because you gotta have it seven days in one. So if you have it on the eighteenth, you're going to come in on the twenty-fifth. If you have it on the twenty-fifth, you're coming in on the first.
We, we.
No, I don't.
Yeah, we. Make sure that our, that we do, it's like you said, this is our only option, based on what the rules be.
Okay.
Because we went through them, because last year we wanted to make sure this year we, of the last year we had some issues.
Okay, then. According to Miss Sue, this is kind of it. Unless you want to change the title on the twenty-fifth from four-thirty to twelve, that's an option. Or just do four-thirty and six. Do I have any feelings from council about those dates on the twenty-fifth, those times? All right, then, I will have a motion to approve the dates for three public hearings on the proposed two thousand and fifteen calendar year ad valorem property tax mileage rate for the city of State Square to be as posted in this agenda. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so I won't be seeing you on the twenty-fifth?
Not at four-thirty.
Not at four-thirty?
Four-sixty.
All right. Addendum twenty, consideration of a motion to approve resolution two thousand and fifteen dash twenty-six, which is a resolution to approve adjustments to the classification and compensation plan to create the position of deputy city manager and authorize the mayor to negotiate compensation. Ms. Grant?
I'm Jeffrey Grant, Director of Human Resources. Um, attached in your packet at council, you'll see a copy of the resolution as well as, uh, job description advised for this agenda item. And, uh, you'll see a highlighted memorandum to you with the adjustments that have actually made to that job description for the deputy, uh, city manager. And I'll, I'll read those, um, just to highlight it, uh, that this position may be delegated the responsibility of overseeing the operations of other departments separate from their primary duties. And then also I have on there, the divisions managed by the deputy city manager will be selected based upon organizational needs and/or the skills, knowledge, and abilities of the incumbent or desired candidate within, within reason of responsibility. As well as we added the I T department as requested to be, uh, daily operational duties of the deputy city manager. Any questions?
Jeff, why are we still singling out the engineering department, water, sewer, natural gas plant, self, information technology?
That is just for, just daily operations. That, that's going to be his scope of, uh, responsibilities. However, um, he, he may be delegated other departments to oversee by the city manager.
My issue last time was still my issue this time. Robert gets hit by a bus, uh, pit, and when that happens, it happens. If it's written that way and it's singled to him. I mean, did we either find somebody or either this has to be changed? If we're right, as we'll be talking about, which is, uh, this position, obviously, we delegate at the pleasure of the new city manager. Then it's really not in.
Then it's really not installed, it's not like he's, like, these departments are not looking at him for a correction.
I mean, I have to agree with Travis, is there a way to craft it?
That's what I thought we were talking about.
Add it to it. Add it to it.
Well, I mean, this is, this is what we went over when we talked about on the phone. And that's why I sent it to you guys in advance, highlighted, just to ensure that it was clear. This enables him to be over those departments at the pleasure of the city manager, whoever that is going to be. That enables him to be over those departments.
Is there any way to write it? Where, and I think we can do that today, because I think we need to go ahead and clear it up, and we're just figuring it out and agreeing to it. Is there any way to write it that says that over all departments? You know, unless that is changed by the new city manager that comes in. And at that point, there can be discussion as to exactly what departments and the scope of those daily activities. Is it possible to do that without, you know, just do it up here and agree to that and vote with that change?
Sure, I mean, the language is in there, so I just, I mean, it's, it's.
I just, I would like to strike that, that second bullet point. And just, it's at discretion of the city manager at that time. And it is.
Provides overall direction to the departments.
Yes.
To all departments.
Yeah, I mean, Jeff has a, in the job description, it says, in addition to, provides overall direction to select departments. And that just gives me an idea when the new city manager gets here, what my primary focus is, but he said, goes on to say, provides overall direction to select departments, coordinate special projects, and performs other duties generally associated with the oversight of government activity and functions. This position may be delegated, responsibility of overseeing the operations of other departments separate from their primary duties. That's what he, that's what Jeff wrote in, and he wrote it, I didn't write it, you wrote it.
But, but I think it still goes back to, a new city manager comes in and he has a history with engineering water sewer, it says, I'm gonna take those personally. Are we gonna stop that from happening, because we've already written it in? I don't, I don't.
No, we can do that.
Yeah, you can't do that, so instead of muddying the water, let's just, all departments are as directed by the city manager. And I'm sure knowing and talking to Robert, he's gonna say, okay, yeah, this is where I'm gonna be able to best use Robert, so this is why we put him anyway. It's a, it's a fine point, but it still gives the city manager latitude, we're not telling him what we want to do.
Or going the other way, Travis, what if we had somebody that's not listed on one of these, decides that Robert says, well, then we should do this. And they go print out a job description and go, yeah, I'm glad that you're offering me this advice, but your job description doesn't say you have any can do my part. And unfortunately, we've had things like that happen, that's true enough.
I'm saying, let's not give somebody that saying, all departments being on the.
Have a new switch in the wrong one.
But I think that, I think your manager's gonna make that call.
What if you restate it into say? And, you know, look on, if you don't mind, look at the job description, let's talk about that first paragraph in your packet.
Job summary, or where we live?
Uh, job title, deputy city manager, department, city manager.
Department, gotcha. Job seven, eighty-five.
All right. So go to, go to the second sentence. Provides overall direction to departments, take out select, and coordinate special projects and performs other duties generally associated with oversight of government activities and functions. This position may be delegated, responsibility of overseeing the operations of certain departments, separate from their primary duties. And when you say by the city manager. This position serves as liaison to mayor, city council members, and various committees and organizations. Does that work?
Say what? Why don't we just pull up bullet point two? I mean, that's, that seems to be the problem, right? That's the only thing that we're.
Well, that may conflict with what's actually here, and that's why I was trying to go back to the description, to the actual description itself.
That's what I'm looking at. Yeah, bullet point two under primary duties, just pull it up.
Well, but if you, if you don't pull out provides overall direction to select departments, then you gotta take the select part, it's gonna be, what are those select departments?
It's what the city manager describes them as.
It's what describes them, like, at the bottom.
That's about the same, what the city manager says he's doing.
Well, at the bottom, you'll see, under divisions directly managed by deputy city manager, says divisions managed by deputy city manager, be selected based upon the organizational needs and/or the skills, knowledge, and abilities of the incumbent or desired candidate within reason of responsibility. So the taken doesn't make whatever departments to that deputy city manager.
Three, four, five, six, number six, assesses and monitors workload, measures, supports systems, and initial reporting relationships. For assigned areas of responsibility, defines opportunity, you know, for assigned areas of responsibility.
So in your opinion, if you just take out bullet point two and don't make any change in the first paragraph, you're good to go?
Yes.
Okay. Does this description, okay? Is it, is there any conflict?
The only thing you put is after the word functions, you can put abstract by city. How about? Provides overall direction to select departments, coordinate special projects, performs other duties generally associated with oversight of government activities and functions, as assigned by the city manager. And then take out bullet point two, we're gonna do it.
All right.
Yes, any must wear case.
Sash.
The shirt, okay. That was sad.
All right, just to be clear, just to be clear, I need closure. Gonna add activities and functions by the city manager, period. And removal of bullet point two under primary duties. Does that get everybody good with that? So that will be what will be considered for the purposes of the motion, the amended job description. Okay? Then do I have consideration of a motion to approve resolution two zero one five two six with the amended job description?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Addendum item twenty-one, consideration of a motion to appoint Robert L. Cheshire to the position of deputy city manager. Do I have a motion?
This means, of course, until next time, he will, he will still be interim city manager, until next time.
Well, as deputy city manager functions as the city manager, yeah. Because in the absence of the city manager, so I will make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, that's a part of that, it's a Robert's last chance. Last chance to run.
All right, all right, so he's, uh.
Well, he, he's thinking about it, look at.
Make a motion.
Can we, can we just go ahead? Can we go ahead and do this before he does run? Any discussion?
Were there a lot of other choices?
All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Yay!
Okay. Do we have any other business from city council at this time? I don't have anything? All right, the gen item twenty-three, city managers' companies. In turn, city manager now, deputy city manager.
And vice.
Vice?
I've got a couple brief items, mine short, then I'm gonna turn over to just two staff members, because I've asked department heads to update you on a regular basis. Only item I've got is the resurfacing in town is going well. Most have been completed, especially those around the Georgia Southern area, with schools starting pretty soon. Got Stockyard Road's been finished, the West segment of West Main, Fox Lake Drive, Gentilly Road, Gentilly, Zedderhour Road, segment Chandler Road, and Piner Drive now look real good. I commend Brown, being over top of that, it looks real good. And then there's two more streets, Davis Street and Woodrow Avenue, don't need to be paved. And they're doing a little bit of work on Chandler, I think that they have, well, they can, but those are more spot places. Two department heads I wanna call up, I wanna ask Cindy West, Finance Director, first, she's gonna update you on the twenty thirteen SLOST revenue. Thought it was important for you to know that they're not coming in quite as projected, so we just gotta keep that in mind. But, but this, right now, it's not even projected as the tier one, covered tier one, so that's the kind of stuff we give with departments, make sure that we slow down where we need to.
Through June, we had nineteen months of collections, and that would have been for the months October twenty thirteen through April twenty fifteen. We are showing eighty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars less average per month than what was originally projected.
Per month?
Per month, yes.
Over how many months?
Over nineteen months.
So that's, that's the county collecting?
That's the total.
Oh, total.
Total, total, total. Our portion of that. Our portion of that is thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars per month. So, right now, for the nineteen months, we are showing almost seven hundred thousand dollars less than collections than was projected for tier one twenty thirteen SLOST.
Any description of this difference in tier one, tier two?
Actual number?
There's a difference, like.
Tier one, tier one is what the whole SLOST was based on, and it was sixty-seven million nine hundred thirty thousand. And then anything over that is considered tier two. Correct, and twenty thirteen SLOST tier one was one million three hundred thousand more projected to collect than what we, as a city, collected for two thousand seven SLOST.
So we'll do this on occasions, and we'll be our, we finished last year strong. We'll put, hopefully, put a little money into the fund balance, you know, not as much as we'd like, but hope it was good. And we hope to give you some periodic updates on where we are operationally in SLOST, where we started with the SLOST, and we just started this year. Of course, we know what our budget's based on, and we keep an accounting of all departments, and keep an eye on it, and see if there's some trends that are getting out of whack real quick, so we can pick up on them.
Hey, because I haven't seen the actual collections month to month.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know a collection in September would reflect an earning in June or something like that, I don't know what the lag time is.
Two months, I guess.
Two months. I'm sorry, anyway. Is this pretty consistent every month, or did we see it in that period of time over two or three months that were substantially lower? Or is it literally coming in, you know, every month is below what's projected? I'm trying to see if there's a trend there, is there a blip?
Every month is coming in below, with the exception of November back in twenty fourteen. It's coming in, what I did was I took total tier, and it should be tier one, total collections, that, based on this SLOST agreement, we should be receiving nine hundred forty-three thousand dollars a month. And there was only one month out of nineteen where we saw over that. The rest have been coming in.
What was that?
That was, uh.
That was on November two thousand?
November twenty fourteen. The rest have, have been coming in around eight hundred fifty, give or take.
Okay. I just didn't know if it was just like a couple really bad months, or it just is consistently.
It's consistent.
How is the change of the car tag, car tax affecting the city of Statesport?
We are actually seeing more revenue from that, but we are gonna need to keep an eye on it as it gets out.
But you're not seeing it in sales taxes, right?
Not seeing it in sales taxes.
Because an article came out a while back, I'm not sure, surely it's not correct, but we never know. A lot of tax, for, uh, tax, I guess, projectors forgot to realize that they were losing all the car tags, right? And they'll, they'll hit them. I don't know if we did that, and that didn't really work, I'm not sure. And that could be a very easy thing, even though you're getting another revenue. So if we're losing thirty-six thousand a month, what are we gaining in the car tax? Do you have a guess? Ten?
Yes, probably around ten.
So it may only be twenty-six off.
Yeah, we're not.
Is that car tax, though?
It's operating.
Restricted as much as the SLOST?
No, it's, it goes through our general fund, it's the operating.
And it's a, and it's a plus.
Yeah, it's a great question, and we watched it, and we tried to stay conservative in our budget this year, because I don't know that he might even predict quite yet what that's doing.
Because some cities are seeing the opposite of what we're seeing with our car tax.
Well, I mean, I'm just sitting here and kind of mentioned to Robert, I've, if we're seeing a monthly, every month, coming in under prediction, you gotta think how much of our retail, et cetera, is going down the road a poof. I mean, that's where you're gonna start seeing the, you know, and everything is happening up down there and all that kind of stuff. You know, it's gonna, I, my personal opinion, it's gonna have a, a very noticeable effect, and we may be seeing that effect playing out.
And when, when did the, when did that, the new place open up? No, it wasn't June, right?
Tanger. Tanger opened up, too.
June? So, I mean, realistically, we haven't even seen the effect, because we don't have, we don't have the SLOST number yet.
But, I mean, I think we've gotta consider that to be a, a real issue. So.
We are watching it, so we'll let you know, we'll make adjustments as necessary. And then, the last person, Won't Light Window, he's gonna update you on three items. The renovations to the fire department and the savings that we've recognized there. The implementation of the software, which I think is nearing full implementation, and then some good news on some crime statistics.
Absolutely, I just wanted to give you guys an update real quick. It's our second quarter, which is our half, half year mark for two thousand fifteen. You'll see two thousand and nine to last year's crime numbers, two thousand and fourteen, we've shown a consistent downward trend in our crime numbers. And the numbers that you're seeing there are your total park one crimes, which are all your major crimes. And eighteen hundred and ninety-six is where we ended the year last year, and that was a tremendous achievement, that was over a ten percent drop from the previous year. And anytime you get above five percent crime number drops, that's, those are huge. We actually had some comments from well-known chiefs throughout the state that we actually included in our yearly report, if you recall. And also, the State Director of the Chiefs Association also sent us a really nice email congratulating everybody for a job well done. Here to date, is the report I wanna give you, it's really good news, again, in that, right now, our crime rate is, is almost a ten percent drop through, through the six-month period of two thousand fifteen, compared to the exact same time last year. And as you will recall, last year, we had a historic drop in crime, over ten percent. So if the trend continues the way we're going this year, it'd probably be one of the record, it'd be a record low year for us as far as crime is concerned in our community. Total violent crime is four and a half percent down, almost four point six. And total property crimes, which are your burglaries and your thefts from autos, almost fourteen percent down. And that, those are really big numbers. I just wanna really reach out to our public safety community, in that they are to be commended. It's, you know, the economic situation in our community right now, and we also know that we are struggling with personnel, but with the partnerships that we've made and, and the things that we've done with our community police, and I think it has had a tremendous impact. And our crime suppression team's also a big part of these numbers as well, so everything seems to be working, working very, very well in that respect, and I just wanna show my appreciation for everything that they're doing.
Let me ask you something real quick. In talking about this, the, the overall reduction in crime, Won't Light Window, is, can you say, is there any area that has seen that reduction more than another area that you cover?
Sure. I was anticipating that question, if I can get it for this slide, it's hard to see. But it's probably in your package, it's still in there. This breaks down even more so, really, really breaks it down, it drills down to individual crimes. And larceny and theft, which is all your thefts, are down almost twenty percent. You did have some things that have upticked a little bit, but overall, when you look at your overall crime rates, your total violent crime, there's your four and a half percent. Total property is almost fourteen, and total is almost fourteen percent down. So it can break it down even further.
I was thinking more geographically, Mr..
Oh, geographically. We've had a significant reduction overall in the city, but we've seen a real reduction in and around the university, which is what we were targeting.
Okay, so that, that sounds, that's what I was asking.
Okay, yeah.
What do the, what do we, what's the due more accidents? Traffic accidents?
Traffic accidents, we're having a lot more traffic on the road.
More cars, more, more cars, more.
More cars, yeah. And that's something I was gonna bring up. You do remember.
If you remember me talking to you guys a long time ago, we were concerned about the crime going up because of the increase in population, the increase in road traffic and those kinda things. And, and we're actually seeing something opposite of that, which is, which is really good. Crime's going down, people are going up, our resources are going down. So it's, it's a, it's a really great job. And also, I just wanna point.
Sorry, can you back it up a little bit? Okay, I, I was missing a number there. I was looking at your violent crimes in the first five or six, you know, there's only single digits. And I was trying to figure out how you get it for fourteen, missing a typical SPOS.
Yeah. As you're dating, compared to June of last year, compared to June of this year.
So, I mean, outside of fights and maybe minor domestic violence, things like that, fairly minimal sort of violent crimes, we ain't no spam.
That's right.
You used to write for the paper.
Yeah.
That's our headline.
And also, just to bring you today, we told, we told Robert and staff about this. The Georgia State Patrol are not working our regs anymore. They had been working all of our regs on state highways, they've pulled back from that because they also have a drain on their resources. So we're starting to work those again. And, and to address some of the high accident areas, we're doing traffic enforcement hotspots into those areas. And it seems to be having an impact on lowering some of those accident rates. Also, the second thing I wanna let you know about is the fire department. The building project, as you know, we had the three-phase building project, and it's coming to an end. And if you, you'll remember, we put this out for RFP originally, and the prices came back at about three and a half million dollars to complete everything we wanted to complete over there. And to date, we, we budgeted one point three million, we'd come in at about one point two million. And that is attributed to Ronnie Shaw and the expertise that he's been able to give up through overseeing this project, and also all the labor that we were able to utilize with our firefighters. If you'll recall, we actually got to a point where we struggled with, with Robert and a few others, and Darren, trying to educate us on the public works laws. When we were getting in the phase two, because we had gotten to a dollar value threshold that had to make us go out and actually bid Seamaral Construction from finishing phase two. And they actually came in and gave us a good price. But had we not had to do that by law, we would've probably come in even lower than that, because we were planning on doing that ourselves. So we had firefighters actually in there doing demolition and, and those kinda things. But I just wanna really reach out to let you guys know, when you see those guys, please thank them for us, because that is a, that is a one point three million dollar savings, or two point three million dollar savings. That's, that's huge dollars, and that's real money. So these guys were phenomenal. We, with the extra money that we saved, those are some of the, you'll see, some of the projects we were able to do. Digital parking and lighting, concrete, the stairway going to the gym, landscaping, awning and the fence. A side note on the awning and fence, if you're looking at the fire department and you look to the left, you see the, you see the fence, the PVC fence, and then you see the metal awning. That metal awning, we got a price to do that, and it was over four thousand dollars. And Ronnie, and Ronnie Shaw and Neil Lee actually got their equipment over there, their welding equipment, and steel cutting equipment, and they welded that and designed that and built it for seven hundred dollars. So they did all that themselves, and we paid for the materials, they provided equipment and labor. And that saved us a lot of money, so these guys are really doing a great job. And I can't say enough about them, so very, very thankful. And lastly, just verbally wanna give you an update on Sun Guard. That's the, the four hundred fifty thousand dollar project that you guys approved some time ago. And we are having our, our go-live date of that project is August the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And really proud of the fact that we're the very short roads of that. It has been a lot of work on everybody's part. In particular, we've had to utilize IT and all of his staff over the last few days. I'm not front, Derek, front. He's not been happy with it, but we've, those guys have been out there since five o'clock in the morning installing printers and card readers and those kinda things, and all the police cars. And out there sweating in the parking lot, doing all these installs. But not only that, everybody's really come together citywide and, and has helped us with this project. If you'll remember, we were looking at about an eight, eight hundred to eight hundred fifty thousand dollar price tag on this project, and we were able to convince the company to let us be their flagship agency for the southeast part of Georgia. And they were able to, to meet our price of four hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we're getting a tier one company for about half price. And it's gonna be tremendous what we're gonna be able to do with that. And I would really like to show you when we get it online, show you some of the details, and invite you to come over and look, and show you how more targeted our enforcements are gonna be as far as our personnel. So if you got any particular questions, I can try to answer those.
The only, the only question, I did have one quick crime question, and then are you, are you seeing, I mean, I don't need to get you specific, but are you seeing, are they seeing someone over the GSU and the county as far as drops in crime?
Actually, I think the county's been arguing, theirs has increased somewhat. That's why they were able to go to the commissioners and, and ask for more deputies. So I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I know GSU has, has been experiencing some decrease. They've been able to add several officers over the last few years. But I think the county's numbers have gone up just a little bit, but their population is really starting to grow too. But around GSU, which is our zone four, our P four, has been extremely positive. You remember all the problems we were having on robberies? They have been cut almost in half, which is tremendous. Thank you.
I do, I do have one quick question, because I noticed that, and I don't know, it's in there, you know, it was coming out, Joe, on there. But I haven't had workers' comp claims coming in my email. Are we doing better? Are we, y'all just decided not to send them to me? Which one is it?
It seems to be slowing down, slow, you know, August one, each system's hurt. It was crap. But July, they'll start making progress.
Right.
So we're hoping it's a trend as well. It does, there's not gonna be hot enough by the end.
Okay, Jeff, did that position get hired in your division that's gonna be working with that?
Yes, well.
Can you tell us about that?
Uh, they'll come up there.
Yeah, I wanna know, did you hire the person and?
They did.
Okay.
They'll be, uh, we've not extended an official offer, but everything's been cleared, background, everything. And the individual is, actually has a naval background, graduated from the Navy Academy, and served, served in the Navy for the last four years, and managed twelve personnel in one position, and did, managed over, you know, managed the duties for, not duties, but managed operations for over like eleven hundred personnel as well, too. Top safety for, uh, equipment safety for other naval officers. So served, served in certain Navy for the last few years, and very sharp, great candidate. Went through about seventy applications and thorough process, so.
And part of their focus is gonna be the workers' compensation piece, which.
That is correct.
And up to ten million travelers?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that, thanks.
Mayor, I would add, travelers ready, must first be onboard, they'll have support of a committee, staff, that gets loaded, and travelers really increase the training.
Okay. Don't want, none of your light last year?
No.
Bad, bad year.
It was a bad year.
Okay. Anything else, Robert?
I would, now that I've admitted it was official, I do wanna say that I appreciate the opportunity and the confidence that the mayor council showed in naming me as the first deputy city manager in this year's state. But I'm excited about it. This last thirteen months has been a challenge, but I learned a great deal, and I'm ready for it. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, we're looking at it.
If he's gonna get it in for you, just he carry gun.
If he wants.
Yeah, no, oh, good God, no!
Only a rainy with me.
Since, I guess, is that our only public comment, Lucille? All right, in that, in that case, I have a motion to enter into executive session.
Sure.
Have second, second we did, any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed, okay.